12:00 City Council Meeting. Terry, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Here.
Mayor Staton?
Here.
Councilman Shoemaker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Zandi?
Here.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Here.
I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Thank you for taking interest in your city government. And there'll be a number of opportunities to talk to City Council tonight. And I will tell you each time that that opportunity arises, please hold your comments to around two minutes if possible. And as we go forward, we'll make that known. And a little housekeeping, please put your cellphones on, vibrate. Okay. And tonight, the invocation is going to be given by Dr. Willis. And the pledge is going to be done by Troop Three of First Presbyterian Church of Bristol. And it was established in 1922. And they have the well above national average of boys obtaining their Eagle Scout rack. And they're here today to get their citizenship and the community merit badge. And this is required for their Eagle Scouts. And they will be doing the pledge tonight. And their leader is Ms. Karen Hossen. So, Dr. Willis?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the wonderful ways that you care for us and the many blessings that we have, both individually and corporately. We ask that you give us vision, give us perseverance, and give us a spirit of unity in these days of division. Father, we ask your blessings upon our nation. We also pray that you would guide us always in your will and see that your purposes are fulfilled. Help us always to reach out to those who are in need and help us to have compassion for those who are less fortunate than ourselves. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Troop Three? You want to come up or you want to do it from the ...? Mr. Broughton, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
No, sir. The agenda as distributed last week is complete and ready for action this year.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is proclamations and recognitions. And David Shoemaker will read the proclamation for Farmers Market Week, and Terry Napier will accept this.
Thank you, Mayor Staton. A proclamation designating Bristol Farmers Market Week. Whereas farmers markets are important nationwide outlets for agricultural producers, providing them with increased marketing opportunities. And whereas more than 5,000 farmers markets across the country offer consumers affordable, convenient, and healthful products sold directly from the farm in their freshest possible state. And whereas farmers markets can help promote child health and reduce childhood obesity by increasing children's access to fresh fruits and vegetables. And whereas farmers markets support the sustainability of small family farms and revitalization of communities, as well as offering farmers and consumers the opportunity to interact. Now therefore, I, Joel Staton, Mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the week of August the 5th to the 11th, 2012, as Farmers Market Week in Bristol, Tennessee, and ask that our citizens support the State Street Farmers Market in recognition of the many contributions they make to daily life in the City of Bristol, Tennessee. Signed this seventh day of August, 2012, by Mayor Joel Staton.
Thank you very much for your continued support of the State Street Farmers Market, both here at City Council, but more importantly, as customers at the market. I often see many of you there buying fresh fruits and vegetables. It's been a tough year for the growers, but they're hanging in there. The weather's been up and down. We still have lots of good produce. We're there Saturday mornings from 8:00 to 12:00, Wednesdays from 3:00 to 7:00. So come down and visit and stock up and take some good food home. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. We have no presentations tonight. So next on the agenda will be public hearings as for the rezoning of property at 1400 Southside Avenue. Mr. Broughton, would you summarize this?
I'd be happy to. The rezoning matter that's before you this evening is for a 1.75 acre parcel that's located on the west side of Southside Avenue between Rustic Street and West Cedar Street. Maybe you can bring that map up for me, Sherri. The area that's crosshatched there is the property in question, 1400 Southside Drive. That's currently the home of Woodlawn Baptist Church. The property is currently zoned R2, which is a single-family in Duplex Residential District. The proposal is to rezone that 1.75 acre parcel to our B3 General Business District. The B3 District, as the council is aware, allows a variety of business and other activity uses as a principal use, including a church. The current zoning, the R2 zoning that I mentioned, is designed for single-family and duplex dwellings, really at a maximum density of up to nine units per acre. And churches are not allowed as a permitted use, principal use. They are only allowed as a special use. So at some time years ago, I surmise the church lighted on that site, or a church was there perhaps before, and the city went through a special use process, the Planning Commission did, to allow a church to locate on that residential district. Next slide, Sherri. Whenever we look at a rezoning, we always look to our land use, future land use map and the policies that associate that land use map. And what you'll see from a little, from that map, which is a little cluttered, is the subject property is identified there at the bottom center with the circle around it. And what you see there is the convergence of three different land use areas, commercial, multifamily, and institutional, all converge at that point with, at near 1400 Southside Avenue. So given the convergence of those areas and recognizing the plan was never established on a parcel-by-parcel basis, and then looking at the broad array of uses and the current use, land use with the church, all of that augurs in favor of the rezoning to the B3 District. The Planning Commission, when it was asked to review and recommend on this proposed rezoning, when they met at their June 18th meeting, they recommended that the council move forward with the rezoning to B3 as proposed in the ordinance before you later this evening. So with that, Mr. Mayor, it'd be appropriate to accept public comment on the rezoning of 1400 Southside Avenue.
Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to come to the podium and discuss this matter? And if so, please come to the podium, state your name and address, please. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on. Okay, next on the agenda is appearance of citizens. And this is the point in the agenda where it gives citizens the opportunity to talk to council about matters that are not on the printed agenda. Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to come to the podium and discuss something? Please come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Counsel, my name is John Crewe. My wife and, my wife Jane and I reside at 529 Taylor Street. A concern of mine is since the construction of the new bridge between Martin Luther King Boulevard and Pennsylvania Avenue, we've seen a dramatic increase in traffic on Taylor Street. This street, as you know, has multiple cars parked, street-side, and many children that play in that area. Not only has the traffic count increased, but the rate of speed at which people travel is very dangerous. Just recently, two weeks ago, tomorrow night, we had an episode where a speeding driver drove through a telephone pole, snapping it in half in two places and leaving many of us without power for a considerable amount of time, not to mention the overall negative aspect of such an event. The stretch of road between Georgia Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue, especially traveling west or downhill, sees speeds in excess of 40 mi, 45 miles per hour regularly in a posted 25 mile-per-hour zone. This condition has existed for many years, continues today, and is a detriment to the neighborhood in general. As a concerned citizen, I would ask that the council give consideration to speed bumps or humps along Taylor Street between Georgia and Pennsylvania. Having looked at this many times myself, I believe that not more than four of these humps would be required to decrease the rate of speed and possibly cause motorists using Taylor Street as a shortcut to consider an alternate route such as East State or Ash. The addition of these speed humps would protect the property of the citizens and perhaps spare the lives of their children. In that, the Fairmount neighborhood was recently named to the National Register of Historic Places. Your consideration in this matter is more important now more than ever to help preserve and enhance the quality of our neighborhood. I believe it's time to convert Taylor Street from a major thoroughfare back to a neighborhood street. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in attendance tonight that would like to talk to council? Seeing none. Next on the agenda is the appointments. And first appointment we have is the Farmers Market Advisory Committee. And we have one candidate for that, and that is Sherman Pippin. And would anybody like to speak on Sherman Pippin's behalf? Well, I will. Sherman's been on the board for quite a while. He is a local farmer, and he's been a strong member for the Farmers Market Board, and I can highly recommend him.
And what does the Farmers Market Board do? Could you remind us?
Yes, they establish and maintain communications with market operators and customers. They act as liaison to the governments that fund the market, and they also are in place to recommend operating rules that they, in their opinion, will benefit the market in terms of its future success and growth.
Thank you.
Okay, for a one, for a one, for a three-year term, sorry, on the Farmers Market Advisory Committee, Mr. Zandi votes for Mr. Pippin, Ms. Fire Robin votes for Mr. Pippin, Ms. Dolan votes for Mr. Pippin, Mr. Staton votes for Mr. Pippin, and Mr. Shoemaker as well votes for Sherman D. Pippin, who has been appointed to another term on the Farmers Market Advisory Committee.
Next on the agenda would be the appointments for the Industrial Development Board. We have three appointments, and we also have one late nominee, and what is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to delay the voting till the application gets accepted, and then we'll vote on this on the next council meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to second that. That way we can consider everybody. Any discussion? Terry, would you like, we do need to vote, don't we? Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Sure.
Mayor Staton?
Yes.
Councilman Shoemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is ordinance and resolutions. This is the first reading of new ordinances, ordinance 12-9. Mr. Broughton, would you like to clarify this?
Sure. Ordinance number 12-9 is an ordinance to repeal ordinance 11-25 relating to synthetic drugs. Back at the end of 2011, the City Council went through a process to, an expedited process, to place onto our local regulations new controlling, controls regarding the use, possession, and sale of synthetic drugs. That was done, as I said, on an expedited basis as the state of Tennessee law with respect to those products was deficient. Since the council enacted our ordinance, the state has stepped forward and enacted new regulations statewide that outlaw synthetic drugs in a way that the older regs did not and provides for substantial criminal penalties, criminal penalties for violation, which our ordinance does not provide for. So with the new state law in place and as there, as that law now makes our ordinance unenforceable, we'd like to go through the steps to remove it from our books and repeal that ordinance as it is no longer necessary.
Does anyone on council have questions for staff? Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to address council on this matter? Seeing none.
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you. Any more discussion?
I'd like to say a couple of things. That we've been through a pretty rough time with the synthetic drugs. This part of the state and Sullivan County in particular was a leader in our state to try to get our state legislation passed. We did the, all, all our governments came together and passed local ordinances to try to deal with it, while our state legislature grappled with the best wording that would be the most effective. We can really appreciate our leaders in Tony Shipley and John Lundberg, who did a lot at the state level. And also right now, the federal law has also passed, but we think our state law is actually probably stronger than the federal law is. So we hope that we won't see what we've seen in the past with synthetic drugs. We know there's always problems, but hopefully not with synthetic drugs. I'd also want to give some credit to, we have a new, it's only a year and a half old or so, Sullivan County Anti-Drug Coalition that brings together all parts of the community, law enforcement, et cetera. And that coalition worked really hard and got education information out there that a lot of police departments used to hand out sheets and got posters into the schools and did a whole lot. And if anybody's interested in more information, that's, the website is www.scad, Sullivan County Anti-Drug Coalition.org. So scadcoalition.org. There's still some problems out there, hopefully nothing like what we've seen before. So we want to thank our police officers and law enforcement and everybody who worked really hard on this. That's what I have to say. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Just real briefly, and I hate to impose on Jack here, but I wondered if Jack might kind of remind folks viewing tonight and in attendance what our penalties were compared now to what the state penalties are?
Our penalties were a $50 fine, which is the maximum you can have in Tennessee in municipal court for ordinance violation. The states, their severe one is a felony, the other one is a Class A misdemeanor, which are very substantial and a lot of jail time is possible.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, also just to add to that, a couple of years ago, it was a constitutional amendment that was out there to change that $50 fine to give us a little more power. And nobody was out there really educating people for how important that was. People didn't understand it. It did not pass. So to get that changed means it has to be changed in our constitution, and we really, because that's for everything. We're limited to a $50 fine unless we figure out creative ways to get around that. But that's something that needs to be changed in our state, and people need to understand it. So taking that liberty to educate a little bit, advocate. Thanks.
Anybody else? Terry, ready for voting?
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Mayor Staton?
Yes.
Councilman Shoemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Next is ordinance 12-10. Mr. Broughton?
Ordinance number 12-10 is an ordinance to amend section 216D2 of the zoning ordinance relating to temporary signs. The Planning Commission was asked the other day at its July meeting, actually, to review a recommendation that came forward to establish new provisions for special signage for new businesses that open within our community and for existing businesses that have reopenings. The language that was proposed would allow any and all types of signage and devices that opens up completely, any type of advertising onsite that a new business would, would be able to use for a period of 30 consecutive days around the business opening or reopening. Now, those 30 days could take place 10 days before opening and 20 days after, or 30 days before, or 30 days after, any period around the openings, 30 consecutive days. That, this ordinance also will allow for, as I mentioned, a reopening. And a reopening will be determined by a real property improvement, building permit that comes forward in evidences that it's something more than just, something more, something to identify how a business has stepped from where they were to something new. And so a building permit is our measuring tool for that. The Planning Commission, when they looked at it, they recommended that this amendment be passed by the City Council as it is drafted. I might also add that there, there will be no fee for this. It'll be, and we'll be promoting when we become aware through the business licensing efforts of a business that is opening, of their opportunity to take advantage of this new business grant opening opportunity, signage. And we also, assuming this passed, this passes this evening and assuming it will be placed into law at our next meeting, we also are prepared to come back. And we have another category of special promotional signage that has a fee schedule that we were going to come back and recommend to you that we moderate that fee schedule to try to get more interest by existing businesses that don't qualify because they're new or they're having a grand reopening, but by new, by existing businesses where they can take advantage of provisions we also have and have less of a burden in terms of the fee that is paid. And that'll be showing up at our next meeting. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the new provision. It's fairly simple to understand, and it's written simply because it's a simple thing.
Does any council member have questions for staff?
So is it clear that there is no fees for this permit of 30 days of signage?
Yeah, without, without a fee being set by council, the fee is zero.
Pleasure of council?
Motion to move forward.
Second.
Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to address council on this Seeing none, any more discussion?
I think it's great. I think that people who do business in Bristol and are opening and expanding should be celebrated. And I think it's a wonderful thing and a great step toward Bristol being more business-friendly. So I'm excited about it.
I'll just add that I think it's a good idea. I think it also, with our signage, and I know we've had different issues, et cetera, but it's really hard to balance. How do we help our businesses to thrive and, and do a good job? And still, how do we remain and be attractive so people want to come here and live here in Bristol? So it's a balancing act to try to figure out how to, how do we do both those? So I think this is a good way to balance.
And also coming from Muddell Beach and Gallantburg for vacation, the Vegas have signage. 20 million people visit that town every year. I don't think signage can stop people coming to your town. So we need to be more business-friendly, and we need to allow our businesses have signage and survive.
Anyone else? Terry, we're ready.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Mayor Staton?
Yes.
Councilman Shoemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is adoption of ordinances on the second reading, ordinance 12-8.
Ordinance number 12-8 is an ordinance to amend the zoning map of Bristol, Tennessee by designating certain properties as B3 General Business District, 1400 Southside Avenue. This is the rezoning that was the subject of the public hearing that we held earlier this evening. It'll rezone the property of 1400 Southside from R2 to B3 General Business District. I'll remind the council that in accordance with your rules of procedure, since this was a matter of a public hearing earlier this evening, no additional public comment is sought at this time.
Are there any questions from council to staff? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council?
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'll just thank Reverend Plais here. It's always nice to have people who are concerned with issues to attend. So thank you for being here.
Anybody else?
Do you?
Terry?
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Mayor Staton?
Yes.
Councilman Shoemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is resolutions, resolution 12-82.
Resolution number 12-82, initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $30 million general obligation bonds at the City of Bristol, Tennessee. We, we actually have two resolutions that work in tandem tonight. So I'm going to, I'll speak to both of them at the, at one time, and then we'll ask the council to consider each resolution one by one. The first resolution that I just read the title of, formalizes the intent of the council to issue up to $30 million in bonds. Of that $30 million, we are proposing to move forward with up to $5 million of that, which is the second resolution that will immediately follow. And that $5 million will be used for a number of projects that have been spoken to and included in the 2014 budget that we're now operating under. And that includes a new financial reporting and accounting software that'll replace an ancient archaic DOS-based system, a number of water system improvements. The council will recall, we have a number of neighborhoods that we are systematically upgrading the old galvanized and transite lines, and this will provide funds to continue that capital program. And also moving forward on, with an automated meter reading system, automated metering system, which will allow for efficiencies in our meter reading process and allow for the cost economies that come with that. So that $5 million is planned to be borrowed in the second resolution. The remaining $25 million in that $30 million cap is for a Chapter 420 project. The council is aware that Tennessee established new legislation this past year that allows, in certain instances, communities to capture state sales taxes for major retailer tourism-related projects. The city was able to be certified under that legislation, and we are seeking to bring a project to Bristol at exit 74. The $25 million is a number you've seen before. That is a placeholder amount that's in our 2013 budget as well. The number is only a number. We don't know if we'll have a project, first of all. Second of all, taxes for major retailer tourism-related projects. The city was able to, uh, be, uh, certified under that legislation, uh, and we are seeking, uh, to bring a project to Bristol at X74. Uh, the $25 million is a number you've seen before. That is a placeholder amount that's in our 2013 budget as well. The number is only a number. We don't know if we'll have a project, first of all. Second of all, we don't know what type of financial contribution, uh, public improvements that may be necessary to facilitate a projects, but nevertheless, we are hopeful of, of making something happen. And this just moves or advances our place and position to, should a project show up, um, in the future. Um, so, that's, that's pretty much, uh, simply what, uh, the initial bond resolution does, which is the first item. Uh, the second item, let me talk about in a little more detail because it's really, go to the next slide, uh, please. The next, uh, involves not only that borrowing that I mentioned, uh, the fixed rate borrowing of up to $5 million for the projects that I described, uh, but it also includes a refunding of, um, capital outlay notes and a state revolving loan fund, uh, that were borrowed by the city. One was in 1994 and one was in 2006. So, we, we are also asking council to authorize the refunding of, uh, about 1.2 million dollars from those old, uh, borrowings, uh, take, to take advantage of lower interest costs that we can acquire today as compared to what we, um, uh, what we are currently paying when those bonds were taken, when those notes and that loan was taken down several years ago. Um, the net savings to the city by moving forward with the refunding will be about $70,000 in, uh, total costs. And basically, we're going to replace, uh, um, uh, debt with an average coupon of about 4.6 percent with debt with a coupon under 2 percent. And the, the savings that come about, uh, because of, because of that. Uh, the, the length of maturity will not change, uh, those, the refunding will be paid off in three and a half years, so we're not stretching anything out. We're simply taking advantage of the lower, uh, rates of interest that are available to us today. Um, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about either resolution. And once the, all the questions are complete, if we can, uh, resolution 12 82 is on the floor and then I'll read 12 83 and we'll ask for you to vote on that as well.
Okay. Is there any questions from council to staff? Seeing none, is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to address counsel on this matter? Seeing none, pleasure of council.
Motion to move forward.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I was just, yeah, on this one or the next one, I was just going to, I don't think we've acknowledged that Tara Musick's, uh, at the table with us tonight and, um, see, if, assuming she's comfortable with all this as our finance person and excited about the $5 million that's going to improve your system. And that's overdue for, for getting that lined up. Thank you.
Anyone else? Tara, I think we're ready.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Mayor Stateon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shoemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dohlin?
Yes.
Resolution 12 dash 83, Mr. Broughton?
Resolution number 12 dash 83 is a resolution authorizing the issuance, issuance of general obligation bonds, series 2012, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $5 million and $0 of the City of Bristol, Tennessee, making provision for the issuance, sale and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of tax for the payment or principal or of premium, if any, and interest on the bonds. Maybe just one last comment about that. Again, this is the, a detailed resolution, um, that authorizes up to $5 million, uh, for the projects that we talked about. Uh, the, um, the resolution is written broadly so that if another project comes up that we, uh, find would be better financed, such as maybe a bridge or something else that came up, it's written broadly so that any public project that we could conceivably come up with would be authorized under this bond issue. Right now, those projects are the ones we're sought, we're seeking and, and I don't expect that to change, but it's written broadly, uh, good, uh, for good reasons. Uh, the, uh, last thing, uh, that I will mention is the, um, the, uh, most of this borrowing, uh, goes to our Water Works Fund. The refunding, of course, the 1.2 millions is, uh, dollars of this is a refunding, uh, refinance, that's going to save money. That'll have no impact other than a positive savings. The rest of it, um, is principally Water Works-supported debt. And the water and sewer rates that we have in effect will carry the debt associated with the projects that we're going to move, uh, that we're going to construct, uh, for several years. Minimally, uh, we're seeing two years and maybe three years before we think we're going to have to tweak our rates. Um, the title suggested levy of taxes to pay for this. The reality is this'll be a Water Works-based financing and it'll be your water and sewer rates that'll, that'll have to be tweaked if necessary, um, to, uh, pay the debt service over up to 20 years based on what makes the most sense when we go to the market in September.
Does any council member have questions for staff? Is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to address counsel on this matter? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council?
Motion to move forward.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tara, we're ready.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Mayor Stateon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shoemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dohlin?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Mr. Broughton, would you like to read the items on tonight's agenda?
Yes, I'll be happy to. We have about eight items on the consent agenda and they include the minutes of the July 3rd council meeting, the minutes of the July 17th work session, includes resolution 12 dash 76 approving agreements with Believe in Bristol, Inc. for funding support, includes resolution 12 dash 77 approving agreement with the YWCA in providing funding support, includes resolution 12 dash seven, 78 approving the sale of property in the Tri-County Industrial Park, includes resolution 12 dash seven nine, 79 designating members of the city council to serve on city boards and quasi-municipal and non-municipal agencies, includes resolution 12 dash 80 authorizing payment and support of a countywide radio system for fiscal 2013, and it includes resolution 12 81 authorizing participation in the Tennessee Municipal League Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant Program.
Thank you, sir. Would any member of council like to have any item removed from the agenda? Seeing none?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Tara? Tara? Sorry as habit.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Mayor Stateon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shoemaker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zandy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dohlin?
Yes.
City manager's report.
I have no report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Could, could you tell us about the Municipal Academy?
The Municipal Academy, sure. The Municipal Academy is a, uh, a multi-week course, uh, that is put on annually, uh, to, um, provide insight into the operations of, of city government. Uh, this year, we intend to have a fall academy. Uh, we've held it in the spring and for the first three years that we've conducted.
In the winter.
Winter. Uh, so, this year, we're going to, uh, hold a, uh, fall, um, academy and see if, um, that doesn't, uh, produce a greater interest in, uh, running into, running through the program. Uh, we don't have the, I'm sure we have the date set, but I don't have it in front of them. October 18th is, that will be the first, uh, will be the first night and it'll run for six consecutive weeks and we'll be advertising soon, uh, seeking, um, candidates to participate this year.
And this'll be the fourth or the fifth or?
I think this is the fourth.
Good. Thank you.
Forty-fourth.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Lilly, would you like to say anything about school system tonight?
We welcome back 4,098 students on Thursday. We're going to hear it up right here.
Thank you. Lots of luck. Uh, city council comments? Anybody have any?
I do.
Ben?
I'd like to recognize a, a loss of a, a fantastic individual in our town, Merle Dicker, uh, executive director of Paramount. A great loss for our city. I'd like everyone to keep, uh, her family in her, in your prayer. And, um, car show is on the way Friday is the big car show downtown Bristol. So, please let your family and friends know, come and see us. We're expecting about 600 cars. And, um, I talked to all the vendors downtown and they will have extensive hours of operation and they will have, uh, facilities outside on the sidewalk as well, so it'll be a, a really fun, uh, evening for us. And of course, David is going to talk about Saturday, so we'll leave that for him. Um, and, uh, we have the race coming up in August, so I want to thank the force in advance for, uh, helping us get through the race. It's a lot of hard work and overtime, but thank you for all you do, chief and your staff. I attended the ribbon cutting for Mitch Walter's Quick Loop on Volunteer Parkway and we're very excited about having a new business in Bristol and, um, I personally thank Mitch for, uh, investing in Bristol. Attending the ribbon cutting today at Foundation Facility on, uh, State Street. And I also thank Alan Hurley for investing in our city and believing in our city. Um, and at last, I'm looking forward to this weekend.
Anybody else? David?
Well, we've got, we've just got so much going on in, in the next month or so and I, I'll be glad to turn over any of this to somebody. Friday night, of course, as Ben mentioned, um, this car show, last year, it was phenomenal. Uh, my wife and I started down at the Volunteer Parkway Inn. We didn't even get to see all the cars. There were so many great cars to look at and, uh, you know, to see State Street just absolutely packed with cars and fans and everybody out is, is wonderful. And, and Ben had so much to do to make that happen and, and we appreciate that. The, the very next night, the, the 11th, Saturday the 11th, we've got Mumford and Sons, uh, a great English band is coming to town. One of only four places in the United States gets to have this, uh, this city-wide kind of, uh, event that they've planned for here and I think two in England. Uh, and, uh, you know, they, they sold out in one day. Uh, we're going to have about 20,000 people downtown and, and it's going to be, you know, even with everything Rhythm and Roots is, I don't think we're ever going to see this many people in front of one stage again, uh, unless it's at the track.
For the next show that comes?
Yeah, the next, to the next show. Till the next show, well, till the next one. Anybody else wants to talk? The next weekend is Border Bash. Uh, then we've got the race the next week, uh, and then Rhythm and Roots 14th, 15th, 16th of September. You know, there was a time when people used to say, you know, there's nothing to do in Bristol. Surely, nobody says that anymore. A, as much as we've got going on all over town and, and it's just, um, it's an exciting time. It's an exciting time for, um, what used to be, uh, a sleepy little downtown with so much going on, just, just glad to be a part of it. Anybody else that can just piggyback in on this? There's, there's so much to talk about. And I know, Margaret, you've got a line up, okay?
Um, I only have a couple of things, um, but there is a lot going on and also, Ben, thanks for recognizing Merle and her work, um, that's, we have had serious losses and families have had serious losses in our community. Uh, just, I wanted to thank Mr. Crewe for, for bringing a neighborhood concern. We always want to support our neighborhoods and hear what's going on and, um, I, I think Joel just forgot to say that somebody will get back with you and traffic comment is something that we do try to work with, et cetera. So, hopefully, Mr. Metzger can, can take a look and I know there's somebody who's wanted a stop sign in that neighborhood for a long time, um, Georgia and, yeah. Anyway, whether stop signs appropriate or some, some, um, of the little bumps or patrolling or several different things that we certainly can do to try to, um, keep Fairmount to be the great neighborhood that it is and help Taylor Street, uh, with the adjustment to becoming, uh, more of a thoroughfare for our citizens. So, anyway, um, and the other thing I wanted just to say was I've got on my family promise shirt, the Day Center had a opening yesterday. The program is, um, underway. Uh, there's been a lot in the newspaper about it and it's where congregations provide, um, housing to homeless families with children during a week at a time and then during the day, those folks either go to their regular jobs, um, they go to the Day Center, they figure out how to achieve, um, housing independence and improve their lives. Uh, so, it's a great program. Johnson City and Kingsport have had it for 13 years. It's time for us and, um, we've started it. Still needs to, other congregations to come on board, either to host families or to be support churches, which could mean something as little as providing one meal a week for, for a church that's hosting. Also, individuals can volunteer at the Day Center or, um, work with other congregations to volunteer. There's just lots of opportunities. And Dr. Lilly, we're hoping that, first off, this year, our schools won't see the high numbers of homeless children like we have, particularly last year, it soared. Also, we feel like we've got a program that can help some folks. This is only one answer and one way to work with folks. Um, there's still other things that, that we can do, that we need to increase doing here in our community, but we're excited about this program, so.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to mention one other thing. The citizens of Haynesfield, uh, neighborhood have brought it to my attention and I guarantee you it's not Mr. Broughton because he lives in that neighborhood as well. Uh, the tennis court at Haynesfield Park needs resurfacing and they said that is not usable at this time. So, I just want to bring that to the council and the city manager's attention.
You want, Margaret?
No. I was just going to say, I went to the back of a voca and they're, they're what used to be a tennis court, now it's basketball and whatever, is being used for roller blade hockey. Um, so, that was, that was, there were a lot of kids out there. I was impressed.
Michelle? Well, I don't have any comments either, so I guess we are adjourned.